This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. This is the regular October meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in the Meeting Room C of the library in Maine. My name is Steve Eming, President of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting to an end. First item on the agenda is go call and introduction of attendees. Call and roll. Malavika Shakande.
Present.
Judy Lance.
Yeah.
Joe Heibrichs.
Here.
Craig Cooper.
Here.
And myself, Steve Eming. Excuse me, we have Coram and, oh, Sylvia.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. We're still expecting Amanda Mado and Laura Guinness and Tom Engelmann, but they have not arrived yet. Also with us today is Jeff Collins, the Library Director, Lexi Riley, Assistant Library Director, Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager, Tracy Moore, Development Officer, Emily Simpaul, Youth Services Supervisor, Jerry Skalak, President of the Library, Marion McGinnis, our City Council Liaison, and Casey Shipley, Recorder. Moving along, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
To approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing an hearing done, I'll call for the vote. Malavika? Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing no one, I'll hear the one. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications. First item there is Friends. Jerry, oh, did you update me on what the Friends have been doing?
Well, I've got several items to report. I've been here for a little while and I appreciate the opportunity to report out. First thing I'd like to just note is we do have Art Cullen speaking tomorrow at the library here in the afternoon at 2:00. Art is a both a prize-winning journalist, so hopeful he'll show up for that. Then he's speaking tomorrow evening also at the Upper Mississippi River Conference, which is a River Action item. We're trying to, I believe we're taking advantage of leveraging his coming to that conference to speak at the library. I've been trying to push this a little bit for the Friends, maybe find more of those sorts of opportunities where we can kind of cost share things rather than just working independently. So Art will be here and I'm sure it will be very interesting to hear him speak.
Time again?
2:00 in the conference room. So looking forward to that.
Okay, if I could, Jerry, I just wanted to interrupt to say that Jerry mentioned Mr. Cullen is a prize-winning.
Pulitzer Prize.
Yeah, Pulitzer Prize, so it's not for you then.
Just work in Storm Lake, Iowa. Pulitzer Prize was more for his work with water quality and the Des Moines Water Works and some other journalism actions, but he has also written a very interesting book on sort of the challenge experienced over the years because of the very large minority population or actually majority population Hispanics because of their meatpacking and their industries. And so it's a real interesting situation actually that he's written on. The second one, probably even a higher priority, and Jeff will probably speak a little more, is at our last Friends Board meeting, we did make a commitment of $200,000 towards the Enhancement to Library Youth Areas project that's being pushed forward. And so we're very pleased to be able to make that commitment to up to $200,000, at least at this point in time, to that project. Third item I've got, the Friends will be sponsoring a vehicle, if you will, a trunk or treat at Fairmount next week. Always look forward to that, actually a very enjoyable time. We did fund the food for the Maine Library Open House the other couple of weeks back and that was quite successful. And then last thing I'd like to mention, we have been, and I've been promoting working on development of actually, if you will, an annual budget for the Friends. They have always been real good about kind of trying to project outward income and expenditures. It's kind of interesting when you look at like a six-year average timeframe that the Friends have had expenditures on a six-year basis of about $300,000 and the income of about $400,000. So able to participate in funding some of these even larger maybe activities. Now, of course, a lot of those funds are dedicated funds for certain activities that we don't totally control in a sense, but that's been a major project. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next item under Communications and Reports are Committee Reports. Tom, anything invited?
Well, I did want to, you know, mention that on budget cap, or a quarter of the way through here, it appeared like some of the expenses were just slightly above that. Obviously, there may be a certain amount of timing issues on some things. So, you know, I don't, I don't think there's any huge alarm on that. It's just, like I say, you know, timing issues on when things are spent. So, and I did want to say thank you to the Friends for the refreshments of the Open House. They were very nice.
Thank you, Tom. Personnel, Vanessa wasn't sure how soon she'd be able to join us, but so just in case she's not able to join us, she asked me to mention that, to remind you, that although we just did Jeff's six-month evaluation, we'll be doing his annual evaluation in November. And we will be using the board surveys for this evaluation. And she intends to send the surveys out on October 31st and we'll be requesting them back by the 7th of November. Next item under Committee Reports is efficacy. Malavika, have any good thoughts?
It's not the report, Steve, but I just had one question that I was asked, and Jeff, remind if I might ask, is people, I mean, two Friends who said they love it, that we have that automatic renewal of items, and when the item gets renewed, the customer, the patron gets an email back, you know, saying, and there's a subject line in the email, but the subject line, I mean, one of them said, not both, one of them said, the subject line says something to the effect, and I should have seen it myself properly, reminder or reminder from customer service library, something like this. But they were suggesting, they were suggesting, is it possible, if it's an automated process, to have something positive? Because it's a great thing that the library is doing, renewing books automatically the second time. So is it possible that the subject line of that email be automated, something, you know, the example was your library items have been renewed, or something like that?
Yep, yeah, we'll definitely check into it. One complication with the system is that it will, let's say you have 10 items that are checked out, it will attempt to renew all the items. If some are ineligible or unsuccessful, then that's when it runs into complications. So we might be able to successfully renew eight of the items, but two might still need to be renewed. So we'll look at that subject line and see if we can make some modifications to make it a little bit more friendly or more applicable, because it has to hit all those situations.
Of course, that's, that's interesting, thank you. That's really interesting to, I will make a note of that. I just wanted to share this, that I listened to The Haunted Tales of Davenport. It's the podcast, and I think, I forget, is her first name Amy? Amy Driscoll gave a talk. She's an archivist here, and it's online, so if anybody wants to listen, she's an archivist here from the.
It's a city podcast.
It's a city podcast. And it's there online and it's also there on my social media page. So spooky tales from Davenport is what she talked about. So just wanted to share.
Thank you.
Can I just, there was also a presentation at German American Parody Center last Sunday, kind of in that vein anyhow. I don't, not a different person.
I think it's the UC Archives Fair last week. I think that was it. I think the UC Archives Fair, wish they gave that presentation. So yeah, you're right, yeah. So just wanted to share, that's it.
Moving along, Director's Report, Jeff, anything to add to or new items?
Yeah, there's just a couple of items that I wanted to spotlight in addition to the report, or at least a little bit of a calling out. One of them is obviously to make sure that I publicly acknowledge yet again the great work that Amber Carlson and Quinn O'Brien were able to do, and they were rewarded with their awards. They were presenting those at the Iowa Library Association Conference last week, really great. So I love that representation for Davenport and what they were able to accomplish, the great things they've been able to do. And then also Brittany Peacock, our Community Outreach and Marketing Supervisor, for her role this upcoming year as President of the National Association of Public Library and Public Services, which is really great. The other thing is the Open House that was on the 30th was a really great success and we're really thankful to the Friends for helping assist with that. We had about 50 individuals that attended. We heard a lot of really positive feedback for that. So really thankful for that. And then in the email I sent yesterday about the community survey, I would encourage you if you are a Davenport resident to make sure you complete that, share it with your friends and family, and encourage them to complete that form as well, so you can get some good feedback for the library and for the city overall as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if it has anything else in the report.
Questions or comments?
Jeff, people have talked like beautifully about the presentation that happened. I regret I wasn't up there and finally. I mean, it has just been so overwhelmingly beautiful, that you feel so proud to be a part of, you know, what you all do and these do, you know, and they really happened. They praised how Quinn, what Quinn has done, and you know, how the community has benefited in every way. And it was not just one of the individuals who I think was there at the same seat as you all were at ILA, but many others got in touch, knowing my affiliation with you all. It was just tremendous. So thank you to you all and Quinn, for what she does.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
Yes. Council Liaison, Marion?
Well, it's gotten quieter at council lately and shorter too. 23-minute meeting. First week after all the big discussions, so in any case, so yeah, so the, as you are probably aware, the discussion and vote on the conversions or the return of one ways back to original two ways did pass. It was tied and it was decided by the mayor who voted for it. The conversion timing on this, just so you know, there's been, it will probably, will probably really not start seeing the actual conversion happen until 2024. There has to, so what will, what will happen first is there, there's, there are two projects. There's the Telegraph to Harrison, River Drive. So two different projects, but obviously, you know, they impact the same street, they impact the same. So likely the resurfacing will happen and then the conversion will come after that. And because of the, you know, Iowa weather and everything else, they will, next year they will be, they will be letting, they will be doing final engineering plans and things like that. So it will take a while. So you probably will not, will not really be, see the true conversion happen until 2024. You may start to see, there were some discussions completely unrelated to this about, there's a stoplight at, there's a stoplight on Second Street somewhere that people have been asking, why is it there right now? And so that, you may see some of that will probably start enforcing, again, doesn't impact the library, but you may see it impact streets, things that, you know, people are not supposed to be unloading trucks in the middle of the street. They do right now because there's three lanes. So we're probably going to start enforcing some of that ahead of time to get people and businesses used to that. And they may start looking at putting some loading areas and those kind of things in place so that, again, it's not all, everything is happening at once. But you will not see, will not be one part converted and then another part converted. That will all happen at once. But it will come at the end of the process rather than early in the process. So, and that's about the best moving target I can give you right now.
And in terms of impact for the library, again, the main thing is going to be what we do with our book drop. And then also what plays out with the intersection directly outside of our area and how that kind of comes to fruition. Now, obviously, staff and patrons walking across the street are most likely to be encouraged to.
Look to the left.
Our local place, the way you're around the street.
The intersection, so it's like, it's like, you're walking.
Will there be road closures during that conversion?
Oh, my goodness, it's going to be such a mess on the West End. What we're doing, Third and Fourth Street, because it is a major resurfacing and curbs and it is a major, it's not just, let's put a little.
Let's one more.
Yeah, right. And that's why in years, in previous years, Division was resurfaced, Marquette was resurfaced in preparation for this program, because we didn't want that going on while this was all going on. So of course, River Drive, Second Street, you know, unless there's work being done, there could be work done on those, but there's no big, for big resurfacing. So there's certainly ways, but I'm sure it will be, I think honestly, that most, the toughest one's going to be the resurfacing project because it is so big and so long and impacts such a, you know, a long stretch. So I think that's probably the one that's going to be more kind of headache for people. But hopefully we can, you know, I'm sure, I mean, we always do make it through, so it'll be our 53rd street to, I'm sure we'll hear lots about it. And, and, and this is also a change, of course. The other thing, this is no, not an update, but the Canadian Pacific merger, the potential merger, I believe the date now for the decision, just not when it would start, is about January. I may be wrong about that, but that's, that's what I've heard, the extended the comment period through part of October. And then, and then, and I think at that point it was a December date, but now it's January. So we will just wait and see. We will wait and see. We don't know what's, what's going to be happening there. One of the things that happened in September, and it was at the end of September, so this hadn't been reported to you guys, but the, the city, Iowa is offering a Destination Iowa Grant, Grant Opportunity, which was very focused on not neighborhoods, not streets, but on, you know, downtown, you know, economic redevelopment and tourism. So our main, we felt like that our Main Street landing, which we had put dollars toward already, was kind of an ideal thing. It kind of, it was kind of right in the sweet spot. It had to be a very concentrated area. It couldn't be spread all over the riverfront. They wanted something very concentrated. So at the end of the day, it was to, and it's, what we're able to do was take ARPA funding, which is for sure, Canadian, some of the Canadian Pacific dollars, which is certainly not for sure, but probably is for sure in terms of it's probably going to happen, I think, and put those together to get another, so that was 14 million to get another 6 million for, from the state of Iowa to do enhanced, to be able to finish off more of Main Street landing area, which was when we decided to do Main Street Landing, the council was like, says staff, go find money. So we've managed, all of this money is not coming out of the regular capital budget. So it doesn't take away from other things that we fund in the city. Now, if, if for some reason Canadian Pacific doesn't go through and we don't get Destination Iowa, you know, then we roll back. But part of that, part of using Canadian Pacific money is another very large access point into the riverfront, which is certainly access, you know, if you're thinking about Canadian Pacific is pretty critical. And so that's one of the, one of the elements of that. So. Voted on, it was right at the very end of September, so you guys haven't heard about that. The other piece of this was that the Figgy joined in, they are, and they went out and raised a tremendous amount of money. So this is very exciting for the downtown, I think. They will be, if again, successful, they would get the management of Destination Iowa. And this is the lighting of the Figgy, which is not just lights. It is pretty fantastic. An artist who has done this, Golden Gate Bridge, there's, you know, libraries, you know, art museums, and so it's a very, I think it's named it's Vill Real. And so that's what they are funding. And it was actually something that was envisioned by the architect when the Figgy was built. So, and Destination Iowa, because it was in that corridor, Wurley Tate, and the state came and kind of visited and really kind of liked these concepts. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and see about that. So that's kind of new since we last met. And so then the last thing is the Halloween Parade is downtown. It is October 30th. It is back in daylight. It was, I guess, terrifying last year, although, I mean, the last one I had a lot of fun, but I got left behind and had to run up the street by myself. It was at night and the children just apparently swarmed. It was very scary. So the city said, we're going back to daylight. So anyway, that will be 2:00 on October 30th. So, and probably the library's involved some way, but I'm, I'm sure there's something.
As a vowel will be.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you, Bert.
That's everything.
Okay, moving along. Next item is old business. The only item under old business is motion to approve the filming and recording policy. We discussed that at the last meeting. There has been one change to that that would be in the areas that filming is not allowed. Address those, please, Jeff?
So this, this policy was presented to the board last month, and there has been one minor change to that where we eliminated the phrase saying rooms reserved for nursing and childcare areas, because we don't have a room reserved for nursing and there is no, legally we cannot prohibit any kind of reporting in a childcare area. There's also not a childcare area. So this just didn't make sense on several levels. And then I did get word back from the city attorney yesterday afternoon. So he said the policy looks fine as is, and he recommended one other change to the next section, and that is where it says taking photographs or videos in areas reserved for staff use only is also prohibited. Persons taking photographs and videos shall not. And then number one, compromise a patron's right to privacy. And then he added, including but not limited to documenting or capturing what book, item or material the patron is engaged with. And then under two, harass, intimidate or threaten a patron or staff member or otherwise interfere with the staff member's ability to perform their duties. So there were two additional suggestions to that section. Otherwise, everything looks good from their perspective.
Okay, would you hit those changes one more time, please?
Yep. So including but not limited to documenting or capturing what book, item or material the patron is engaged with. And then under the second, harass, intimidate or threaten a patron or staff member or otherwise interfere with the staff member's ability to perform their duties. And library staff's recommendation would be to pass this policy.
Thank you. Apologize, but we got a little out of sequence there. Just a motion to approve the policy, but I guess good to know that those changes are there. So we have a motion to approve the filming and photography policy.
With the amendment.
With the additional changes that Jeff just.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Tom. And a motion in second to approve the filming and recording policy. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing a call for the vote. Sylvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. And who has joined us?
Hi, Laura Guinness is here. I'm sorry, everyone, and yes, I vote to approve the filming and photography policy. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
And my vote is yes, the motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You're at the top of the list again, Malavika.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda. New business. First item there is a motion to designate Bequest Funds to the Enhanced Early Learning Literacy Spaces project. You may recall, Lexi gave us a presentation on those enhancements and Jeff, we included a memo about the Bequest Funds from Michelle Murray. We have a motion to approve the designated, to designate the Bequest, Bequest Funds to the Enhanced Early Literacy Spaces project.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just one thing to again reiterate on this is the Friends have generously offered $200,000 for this project.
Yes.
With the existing $258,000 for the total Bequest, we're already at nearly a half a million dollars. And then through the work of others, such as Tracy for applying for an RDA grant, which Lexi then did a presentation to their board last week on, we're hopeful that we're going to get another substantial amount from that alone. And then tied into everything else we can do with funding, we're hoping to, to continue to build upon that success so that we can make that space a really, really great location. And we're incredibly thankful for the, for Michelle Murray for not only her years of service for the library, for the community, but then for her to be able to bequest this large amount to make a really transformative appearance for the library that's long-lasting, and just we're really, really thankful for that opportunity.
Will the space be named for her?
It already is at Maine. There is a, there's a plaque up for, in Maine for her, and we'll look at naming opportunities depending on what we receive in funding for the other two locations as well.
Other questions, discussion? Hearing and a call for the vote on the motion to designate Bequest Funds to the Enhanced Early Literacy Spaces project. Laura? Laura?
I heard my name, but I didn't hear, are you asking if anyone has questions and me specifically, or am I to vote?
I'm calling for the vote on the motion.
Aye, yes, yes. I'm good with that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
And Sylvia?
Yes.
And?
And Amanda.
Amanda.
I'll add a yes.
Yes, thank you. Almost forgot. I was trying. Okay, and just at this point, I want to mention to Amanda that I didn't relay your information about the director's evaluation?
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, moving along on our new business. Next item is motion to approve closing the library facilities for the public on April 27th, 2023 for the annual staff in-service meeting. May I have a motion in that regard?
I submit, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Malavika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Have a motion and a second to approve closing the library facilities to the public on April 27th, 2023 for the annual staff in-service training. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, a call for the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Thank you. Laura?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Next item is president's comments. This is again, I'm being kind of echoing things that others have said, but it was a, I did attend the Iowa Library Association Conference last Thursday and Friday. And it was very nice to have Quinn O'Brien and Amanda Carlson both got awards from the ILA for their work. That was very nice. And there were quite a few good sessions there and got to talk to some other people. There were more trustees there. I think I saw six or eight. At the previous meeting, I was the only trustee in attendance. So at least I had some people to confer with. I did meet a library trustee from Storm Lake, where Mr. Cullen is coming from, so I thought that was interesting when I saw where he was from. So anyway, that's really all I have to say, so we'll carry on from there. And turn the floor over to Emily Simpa, the Youth Services Supervisor, for some training on Youth Services.
Yes. Are you going to be my smack author?
I could do that.
I could come do it if you'd be there. All right. Should we sit here? This is weird, right? I don't like talking to adults. I only like talking to kids, so I'll do my best.
We can start throwing things or something.
I can really help with that. Yeah, all right. As Steve said, I'm Emily Simpa, the Youth Services Supervisor. And today I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about our department, what we do, some things we have coming up, and just kind of share what we've got going on. Go for it, Casey. All right. So our mission, our overall mission is to empower exploration. And we do that through promoting literacy and learning. By, we celebrate reading by introducing readers to new books and facilitating conversation about books, encouraging reading across all age groups, including family reading, and support early literacy and lifelong learning. And we also work to engage our activities in open gathering spaces, offer entertaining and enriching programming that meets the needs and interests of our diverse population, and reach out to the community to provide services outside the library as well as spread library awareness. Next. I'll give $5 to anyone who can spot what's wrong with this picture. We do not have a current staff photo, so you'll notice that Joe, our newest Youth Services Assistant, has been photoshopped onto Angie's body. We'll get a He does. He actually fooled his wife for a second. She was like, when did that picture happen? And he's like, that is not my body.
Did you turn that for Matrix?
He does not go Photoshop, but it's, that was from our Frozen Party a couple of years ago. We have six full-time staff, including one supervisor, me, two librarians, Christie and Amber. So those are the two people on the right side of the photo. Two library assistants, that's Holly and Joe. And one early literacy coordinator, which is grant funded through December 2024. She will be starting, our previous one resigned. So our new early literacy coordinator, Isabel Noble, will be starting November 1st. So we're really excited to have her join us. She is coming to us from P V Junior High. Griffin's teacher. Yes, she's a tea, what? She's Griffin's teacher. Oh, yeah, I'm stealing her. Sorry. So she's finishing out the quarter. I'm really excited. She has, despite being currently a family consumer science teacher, you probably don't know that family consumer science teachers have to have a pretty strong background and take extra classes in early literacy. Yeah, because they teach like about child development and things like that. So she's got a strong background in early literacy. She's done a lot of really cool projects at her school. I don't know if Griffin did this. They, she, they learned about all the developmental stages and then had to design a toy for a particular age group, and then they got to give those toys to the group. She's done a lot of really cool stuff. I'm really excited. She's, she's going to bring our age average down. We're all about the same age. So we're really excited to have her starting with us soon. Youth Services Responsibility. So we are in charge of collection development for most of the children's and YA areas of the library collection. I'm not going to worry by reading all of those various outfits in your board packet. There are a couple that we've passed off to people, like Lexi does Playaway, or what do we do now? I gave it away and I forgot. Audio books.
Audio books and the Playaway Lunchpads.
And Playaway Lunchpads, and a couple of other things like that that we've passed on. It's a lot of selection areas and a large amount of budget, and it's hard to manage with just three of us doing all of that selection and management. So, but we still do most of it. We also create displays for the library that and support the programming that we have going on or general themes that we've got going on. So we had our Hispanic Heritage Month Reading Challenge, so we did a Hispanic Heritage Month display. We make displays for summer reading and just other, you know, seasonal kinds of things. Right now, I think we have a like creepy crawly display up. We try to stay away from specific holidays, but still do seasonal things. A big portion of our work is programming. We plan those quarterly and about four months in advance. And we do programming for ages zero to the 19. It's a big range. And we also do school outreach. So while we do have an outreach department, we also, we take a piece of that because it's such a big job. And we do any outreach that is, takes place in a school or is like a school trip. We do those things. So things like that include our teen book groups, Battle of the Books. GLO stands for grade level outreach. In education. I don't know what it is. It's a Denver schools acronym. We do those for first graders every year. Family Nights, I have one of those on Friday night. I'm doing a drunk retreat and Fall Fest at Jackson. And we also do promotion of summer reading. Next. So I wanted to, the next few slides are just pictures because I wanted to show you some of the things that we do. So one of the, our programs are broken down in a few categories. Early literacy, grade school, teen, and kids or passive programs. So our early literacy programs, one big aspect of that is our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, which I think I have a stat about later in the presentation. Many of our early literacy programs are story times. We currently offer story times for babies, toddlers, and preschools as well as, preschoolers, as well as various special or themed story times, like in the past, we've had a Night Owl story time or a Milk and Cookies after-school story time we have going around now. Prior to the addition of our early literacy coordinator, I had started offering early literacy focused parent education classes. So like something where parents would come without their children and create some sort of manipulative or activity that they could use with their child at home. So an example of that is this busy binder that's up in the corner there. That's just one page of it. So they were able to go home with a binder that their child could use to do basic math and counting activities, word building, things like that. And then down in the other corner is a Quiet Book program that I offered where they built a book, they came, built a book out of felt, where there were little different activities that they had all the templates there, and they could build the book. That one is a matching activity with a washer and a clothesline. So the socks go in the washer, you pull them out and match up the pairs. There were a bunch of counting things, fun activities like that. I passed them on to our early literacy coordinator when she started. It didn't quite go as I hoped. But I'm looking forward to our new early literacy coordinator taking that back over and kind of expanding on those. You know, as I said, she's a teacher and has a strong background in early literacy, and I think she's just going to really be able to take off of those. We've heard that it's, and it makes sense, it's difficult for parents sometimes to get to those programs without their kids. So we're looking at potentially offering some parallel programming where in half of the room, we'd be doing the activity with the parent, and then on the other half of the room, we'd be having a playgroup or a story time, something to keep the kids busy on the other side of the room. So I'm excited about all of the things that should be coming up with our early literacy programming. Casey just knew I was ready. Good job. Grade School. Grade School programming makes up a really large chunk of our programming. They vary pretty widely from like themed celebrations like our unicorn party, which is up there somewhere, to like craft programs or play opportunities and guest presenters, book clubs, all kinds of things. We also do quite a bit of school outreach for this age, including our first grade glow trips, elementary Battle of the Books, and Family Nights. One program that's coming back in the winter that I'm really excited about is our Make Blue Mondays program. It's my program, so I'm excited about it. So it's an open-ended play program that's themed. So one week, we have a coffee shop where the kids can pretend to be baristas. Or the next week, we had a pizza shop. Holly is so talented and built that pizza oven with the pizza peel. And so they got to, we got cardboard rounds and they got to build a pizza with sauce on and all the toppings. We have pizza boxes donated for Happy Joes. And then they, the parents are really great at playing with them. It's a good opportunity for them to engage with their child. And that's an after-school program. I also want to bring back Tape Town, which is right below that pizza oven picture, where we make like a big town with roads out of tape on the floor, and kids would fill out a thing to rent a car and drive around to different towns where we had books that went along with whatever was there. So if it was the car dealership where they rented their car, then there were books about cars there. Or if then they drive over to, oh gosh, it's so ongoing, I don't remember what we had, like a playground area or a park, then we have books on those areas. So I want to do that one again too, soon. We also offer incentives for our first graders who return from our, the glow trips. So on their first return visit, they get an owl backpack that's very adorable. If they return again, they get a button and they get to sign the banner that you see Amber holding there, and we have one at each location. And on their third return visit, they get entered into a raffle for a QC family staycation. So because three return visits in a short period of time demonstrates a family commitment to literacy. So we wanted to give a prize that was for the whole family. So this was our winner this year. They got, we had a hotel stay donated from a local hotel with Kulo, because that's important if you're in first grade. And so they get a one-night hotel stay for a family of four. They got a gift card to Red Robin, Cold Stone, gift card to Elevate Trampoline Park, and a gift card to Books-A-Million, and all of the hotel was in that area too, so it was all close. And he was very excited. He was super adorable, and we were excited that he won. All right. Our teen programs. So Amber, our award-winning teen librarian, I actually start calling us an award-winning department all the time. So Jeff, Lexi, you'll hear me say that a lot. So Amber does the book of our teen programming, although Joe, who's new to our department as of the end of August, he's been assisting since he joined. Amber does monthly book groups at many of the middle and high schools. So that little collage of pictures on the left are all from book groups. And they're really successful. Lexi started them with me when I was the librarian at Smart. And they've continued and really grown to other schools since then. This month, Smart's Book Club. Next month, they're going to have to split into two groups because they have 50 kids at their last one. Yeah. So at book groups, Amber brings a bunch of books for the students to check out there, our books to check out there at their school library. She takes requests and caters each month's offerings to the needs and interests of those particular students. She brings a craft for the group to do while they chat about whatever they're reading. And then Amber also does book talks. It's really fun. It was the best day of my month, every month, when I was a teacher librarian. Teen Advisory Board, which I know you guys have already heard about, is really growing lately. The group is the biggest that I've seen it since I started almost four years ago. Right now, we're in the middle of Teen Togur, which is a YALSA, the Young Adult Library Services Association, a subdivision of ALA. It includes a teen reading challenge competition among the area libraries as well as a teen video contest. And they've had it in art and writing contests this year. And then the teen video contest culminates with red carpet screening of all the video entries at the Putnam. So Amber's been working really hard on that. We also brought back teen gaming this fall, which has been on hiatus since the pandemic. It runs concurrently with TikTok Club, which is my favorite club. If you're following our TikTok, the teens make the most hysterical TikToks. They're obsessed with Kermit for some reason, and they keep putting our Kermit puppets in the videos. And we're also adding an anime club. Joe is going to do that. Next. And these are just some of our kits and passive programs. We don't do as many of these as we used to during the part of the pandemic, but we do have one very large kit program coming up. It's our third annual Kit Miss, 12 Days of Kit Miss program, where I lose my mind and decided it's a good idea to make a kit that has 12 crafts in one box. There's two different, the last two years are up there. We make 100 of them, because I'm crazy. And it's really popular. They, registration fills in like 20 minutes every time. And then we do a Zoom where the kids all do the last craft together, and then they do like a show and tell of all the things they've made throughout. It's really fun. And then I forget how much work it is over the course of the year, and I decide to do it again. We're also bringing Out of the Blocks back soon, which is our Lego program, where kids get a box of random Legos, and then they're challenged to build something on top of the box and then bring it back in for display. Up there, we've also got, one of our, that bird one is a collaboration we did with Nahat, where they make kits with us. We've got our tiny art, what did I call that? Tiny Family Arts. There's Tiny Family on it, but Mini Masterpieces is the other one, where we made a tiny gallery of like three by three, three by three canvases. I think we're going to do that one again this spring too. And then those are some pictures on the right side from our mermaid party, which was supposed to be an in-person party, and then the pandemic happened. And we did it as a kit later on, and all these people sent us pictures of their kids enjoying our Zoom event and doing all of the crafts. It was really fun. And then we also do passive programs within the library, like scavenger hunts and things like that. And some statistics. So our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, right now, we have, as of like So our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Program, right now, we have, as of like 20 minutes ago, longer than that, like an hour ago, we have 1,109 children who have registered for the program since we relaunched it in the spring of 2021, and participants so far have read 116,429 books. Yeah, it's really successful, and, and I'm excited for our new early literacy coordinator to be here and, and really continue growing that. I would really love to see signup of, for that program happening at birthday classes, and I think we can really grow the program that way. We just haven't been able to make it work yet. This year so far in 2022, we have offered 394 programs, and I've talked about the range of that, and we've also facilitated or participated in 65 programs at local schools and organizations, mostly schools. And then I'm sure you probably already heard about their summer reading stats, but I'm really proud of them, so I'm showing them again. So these, this is as far back as I have stats for summer reading, but this year's, our, our goal was a 25% increase, so 1,715 was our goal, and we ended up with 2,233, which was a 63% increase over 2021, and a 77% increase over our pre-COVID numbers. I think Beanstack has had a big impact on participation rates, but we've also had really great buy-in from the schools. I think Jeff has talked to you about, maybe, I thought I read it somewhere, that they, they used our theme in their summer learning sites and did a lot of our activities and logged as a group, and that has really helped grow those numbers. This year's public school winner, we just presented their trophies last Wednesday, was Hayes Elementary. They had 36% of their students participating, and they beat their closest competitor by 13%, which is really great for them, not, not the one who lost. And this year's private school winner was Trinity Lutheran, and they had 21% of their students participating. Both schools received a trophy and $1,000 in new books for their school library. Oh, our, for our GLO trips, they also received $1,000 in books for their library, the school with the highest return rate, which was Eisenhower this year. All right, last slide. So things we've got going on right now, this is another from Make Believe Monday. I love this picture a lot. He's taking his mom's coffee order. He was so sweet.
I love the tiny girl.
I know. It's adorable. You should come. You should stop by. When we start this up in January, you should come to Make Believe Monday. It's so cute. We are working on getting our student library card program off the ground. We've hit a little bit of a delay. The district was without email for a long time, and then the coordinator was, was sick, and so it's okay. And so I missed a couple of meetings with her, but the goal of the program is that Denver School students would automatically receive a library card when they register for school. So the parents would be able to opt out if they aren't interested, but everybody would automatically get a library card just when, when they register for school. I'm really excited about that. We're also trying to get started working with Monroe to pilot a program where we work more, well, they kind of mirror what we do at the library. So if we had, like our Hispanic Heritage Month Reading Challenge, they would do parent, like complimentary programming at school to go along with that, and advertise our programs, promote them, and do things to go along with our themes and the programs that we do throughout the year. And then if that goes well, then they are interested in expanding that to all the schools. I was really clear with them that I want to make sure that we're not duplicating or replacing any of our programming, but complementing it, so. And then we're planning our GLO trips for our first graders for this year. We are going to, instead of having them come to the library this year, we're gonna do what we did last year, but tweak it a little bit. So we'll go to them with the owl, so it'll be a collaboration with Outreach. We'll go to the school with the owl. They'll get to come out and check out. We'll go in and do a storytime for them there. We'll do a craft, and then they'll have an opportunity to earn those incentives for their return visits. And that's all I got.
You did a good job.
We did, yeah.
Well, I always thought the library was a pretty neat place before I knew all this was. Any questions or comments?
Emily, thank you so very much to what you shared. You, you did say that you should sometimes have a problem with, you know, with parents. I'm, I'm not using the right phrase here, but you have a programming for parents who can help them with the orders and things like that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I can understand the childcare and all that.
Yeah, childcare is a big concern.
Childcare and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I don't know, you must have tried this already, but it can help, having, going into PTA meetings.
Sounds like a good idea.
Especially elementary, school time, and if, if, and I know that you have Denver connections.
Yep.
School connections, but if you need any help, I'd be glad to help you with, you know, because they like to have guests, you know, I mean, the meetings, the meetings run for one hour, one and a half hours, and quite a few places now they have started Kivani students, Kivannis?
Yes.
Kivannis. Kivannis students from colleges as their caregivers in the school, so they get their volunteers and the parents get their own time.
Yeah.
So if, if that's something you want, if you do think, and I could be of any help, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. Yeah, and we've really built our PTA partnerships up recently. I think we got in with a couple of them, and the others have started to hear, and so we're getting more calls, you know, like this one from Jackson to come, you know, have a table or a trunk, in this case, at their, their trunk or treat event. Yeah, so it's really exciting. Thank you. Emily, thank you.
Steve, I'd just like to reiterate that, and I've said this at the meeting before, that the Friends Group, we have made it quite clear that our number one priority is supporting early literacy programs, and if funding capabilities ever came to push to shove, that would continue to be the case, so I just want to reiterate that.
Yeah, we're so appreciative.
Anything we can do to help and even more so after, I don't forget that Friends meeting not too long ago, they showed a slide about having poor public schools, and it was still like under 60%, we're reading at the level we're supposed to be reading at, third grade or something.
It's pretty bad.
So whatever we do can't hurt that number, that's for sure. We hope, we hope. Appreciate that.
I'd like to, a big thank you for this whole idea of, this really tells us what's going on here. It's kind of, you know, meeting, and so it's just, it's great. Thank you so much, all of you. I'm just, you know, bamboozling a lot what you do, so thank you.
We're very tired.
So one thing to definitely pass on for, to share about Emily is that one of the things that she's been able to do really great is build on the connections with the schools in particular that Lexi and her team had done prior, and really grow that and build those connections coming from the school district really helped with those relationships. And then she's done a really great job in the last three and a half, almost four years to build upon that, and a testament to that, obviously, is Summer Reading this last year with their summer learning program being modeled almost entirely upon our program program that she ran. And then another thing that you probably don't see regularly, because this is a lot of really fun, great things, but the attention to detail that Emily brings as well. An example of that is a spreadsheet that she created to help identify school boundary areas with poor access to library branches and public transportation. And then she used that sheet to then rank schools from the highest percentage of students at or below the poverty line to the lowest. So she created a ranking of 1 to 27, which then we can use that information to identify the schools most in need and increase the targeted outreach. That's the distance to branch.
Which is why we picked Monroe, because they're in a real like dead spot for library services. I don't think any of them are gonna, Third Street to, to get to the library or up the hill to Fairmount, and they have one of the lowest summer reading participation rates this year, and we really want to change that.
It's a very enthusiastic school.
What, Jackson?
Yeah, Jackson, Jackson too, but not, actually, actually, no. Jackson was in second place.
Really?
This year. But Monroe definitely is a, is a school that I want to bring our services to more.
They're very, they're very nice.
I have a soft spot for Monroe.
I've got to go over the day they welcomed kids, and I was very impressed by their staff, by the, the leadership, their enthusiasm for what they were doing. I mean, it really, it was pretty palpable.
Yeah.
I mean, there was, kids were there with their new shiny backpacks, but quietly over in the library, there was, when we went through the library and just as we saw everything, and there was, there were a stack of backpacks, and it was obviously for kids that hadn't had the shiny new backpack.
Yeah.
And, but it was, you know, we just happened to, just happened to be off in the corner and not a big hoo-ha, you know, so it was, it was a very touching and impressive place, actually.
Yeah, so Brittany and I have been talking and working on making sure that we get outreach services to those, those kids that are at, in those areas when they don't have good transportation to a branch, and, and those scores are, are low too. Sorry, I just interrupted you.
That's exactly it. But it's a, it's an example of that next level that you wouldn't see at perhaps another library, and it's just a great testament to the work that Emily and her team are doing through the community.
And I also have a monthly meeting with the federal and state programs coordinator at the school district, Jen Membly, and, and she also oversees the teacher librarians, so that's how we're able to, to make a lot of those connections.
Thank you for all you do. You and staff.
My award-winning team.
Yes. Sorry.
That's how we'd like to be referred to from now on.
I like that. So noted. Okay, so anyway, that is taking us to the end of our agenda, and one that's left is a motion to adjourn?
If I may, if I may, prior to, I just wanted to let people know, I belong to both the Catfish Jazz Society and the Mississippi Valley Blues Society, and they're actually having a collaborative concert number six at the Viking. Remember the name of the band? Winning collaboration.
Who wasn't either. Yeah, yes.
So if you're into either music, either into jazz or into blues, it's gonna be a great combination. It will be Sunday the 6th at the Viking Club down Beavis, 2 o'clock. It's $10 per person. You can't get two hours of entertainment for 10 bucks anymore, so if you're available, I will be posting something later, and I'd like to put a poster up if it's possible. I don't know, there's a board here. Or... We do have boards, yeah. So I'll bring a poster in later, but if you're available, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, there's nothing else to come before this forum. Second motion to adjourn.
So, Moon.
Thank you, Tom. The second.
So second.
Thank you for helping. The motion is second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.